All right, let's call the meeting to order. It's May fourteenth, Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Would you like to lead us on our pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, roll call, please.
Douglas Steady, Kathy Buckley, Jeremy Connors, Michael Haggadorn, Holden Lehman, Ed Maren, Crystal Palmer, Mark Sam, Holling Stone.
Okay, we started. Result of the superintendent of schools recommends the Board of Education to approve the agenda. I need a motion. Mark Sam, second. Any discussion? No? All right. Call of four.
Aye.
All right, no abstains or knows? Motion passes. All right, we are scheduled to have an executive session first. And then we'll come back into regular session at six thirty. So I need a motion to go into executive session. Oh, the result of the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons, proposed litigation and collective negotiations with the Beaventown support staff. Motion. Mark, second.
Second.
Crystal? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any knows? Abstains? Motion passes. Going in at five thirty-three. We just came out of executive session, going to have a public comment moment, just to remind everyone that this is open session for comments to the board. And to have discussion or comments to the board, if you have any complaints, please make sure you go through the process with the district clerk first. If you have any other issues, you're welcome to comment here. Just remember to not mention people or anybody by name in the district. It's important they maintain confidentiality. You also don't want to have any libelous comments, you know, anything like that, that's going to be in public, right? So any concerns, please state your name when you come to the podium. Sure.
I have a handout for all the board members.
Okay.
Mr. Speaker. I don't have to get up, you're just going to tell me when. Thank you.
So just as a point of comment, you know, we, this is a, this is a board meeting for the board that is in public. It's not a board meeting to discuss with the public, just so everybody knows. So we'll happen to receive the information and we'll put it through the right channels for, for the process to move forward.
Okay. Cynthia Nagel. Recently I was updating myself of Beaventown School Board policies and procedures when I came across a section of policy goals and objectives titled Sexual Harassment Codes zero one one zero, which states information on sex, gender, and/or sexual orientation. If you read this section in the district policy manual, we find two, it's hypocritical on a certain board member who supposedly resides at an address and has signed a lease with this property. You will find that it strictly prohibits homosexuality. Please see the packet that I gave you. So I need to ask, how can does this individual conduct themselves when issues of such nature are at hand? Sadly, I also recall issues of the past BOP member who may not have been of their sexual preference acceptable. I can only hope this concern will be addressed and not ignored as my last concerns have been. I speak as a taxpayer, homeowner, and concerned citizen of Beaventown School District. Please note also, this address is only open from May first to October first. I wonder if the BOP member has that regulation of how long you have to be in the district beyond the board.
Excuse me, Ms. Natter.
I also want to say thank you.
I, I just need some clarification. You brought the question on the sexual harassment policy that we cover through New York State and NISBA, and we're adamant about making sure that this stands. Are you saying, are you suggesting that, that the policy is hypocritical? Is that what you said?
Not, not being followed by one of your board members.
Okay, so that's, that's enough. Okay, that's good.
I just wanted to thank you for responding to my FOIA request. Not to worry, I have all the addresses I need. I'll be forwarding information to appropriate offices. And I do have one thing to say, no offense, the share of it's here, but I think the money could be used better for teacher supplies and aids rather than paying a, a share, not defended by you, but I think that money could be spent.
That is your opinion, okay. Anyone else? All right. Having that be it for public session, we'll move on to presentations.
I have a couple questions.
Oh, oh, go ahead, please, go ahead, go to the, your name?
Yes, my name's Lisa Pickard.
Oh, now, just so you know, we don't answer questions. If you want to make a statement.
I have a statement to make.
That doesn't, doesn't address anybody in specific or concerns, that's okay.
It concerns some of the policies of Beaventown School House.
Okay.
So people, those other kids that get in trouble, they either get detention or, or like that. Did you know that these kids are getting cold lunches? That they do not like, cold peanut butter sandwiches on thin bread or cold cuts with a piece of cheese? And they're not allowed to get a hot lunch because they have detention? I don't know if any other parents are concerned about this, but it's a big concern because my son has a, has a lot of problems this year with other policies that Beaventown has. With this, also the no fail policy that Beaventown carries. My son has been pushed through seventh, eighth grade with twenty-five math grade to be expected going to ninth grade to pass math and now have, have been held accountable to learn ninth grade math when he failed seventh grade math, eighth grade math, did no understanding with a grade of twenty-five. Now he is caused him through nine months, the last seven months of school. He has twenty-five referrals for behavior problems because of this. He is depressed because of this. Because now he's failing and probably held back because, because of the no fail policy, because he went through second grade to eighth grade and pushed through each grade where one year he had a good year and he passed everything. The following year, he failed almost every class and it was not how the option be held back, they just think, oh, it would be more detrimental to help, to hold a kid back that push him through, that failed every class with not understanding. I brought this up to the superintendent. I brought this up to Beaventown's principal. I have, now I have DSS involved and she's calling the meeting as, as we speak. Because Beaventown School has failed my child and loves writing referrals after referral, after referral for a kid that does not understand the subject that he is expected to know after failing for most of his time in Beaventown School. And Mr. Mannix knows this. I have to write a two-page letter in order to come speak with you people today. And I wrote that three weeks ago. I had to have DSS tell me about this town meeting. Because he said that was up to him, that I spoke with you two, with you people today. This is how Beaventown School treats people. And my son through DSS has not had a behavior problem. He does, he has, he has ADD.
I, I.
And he's being diagnosed through, through DSS right now, and that's why he, he does not understand the subjects that he expected to know.
Mrs. Speaker, obviously this is a very emotional subject and it's, you very much you're right and you should champion the education of your son. And, and I commend you for that because we all understand that for our own kids. I think, I think that as, as an institution, we have to make sure to try to, every child is supported every way possible.
And my, my child has not been.
Let, let us follow the system and even though you're frustrated with the system right now, let's see if we can try to make sure the system works in your favor.
It hasn't, now, sir, I appreciate that, but since, I've been trying to do this since I called a meeting with the school last June.
I understand, I understand.
I got, I, let me finish.
Okay, go ahead.
I called me the school's principal, guidance counselor, and your dean of students, Mr. Manning, last June to prevent this year, because my son didn't understand last year of math and so the other subjects. I called a meeting to, to make sure that this did not happen. You know what I got told by Mr. Manning? Oh, I'm sorry, I must have dropped the ball.
This is, I, I understand you're frustrated. This is not the venue to go over to the details. Obviously, there are some concerns that you have and I think that they need to be looked at. So give us, give us a moment to absorb the situation and see what we can do for it.
Okay, because, one, why do I have to take that?
No, sure, go ahead.
Why do I have to go through him, write a two-page letter? And I did not hear back from that man at all. I wrote in detail. And I was told that I had to go through him to speak, to speak to run the board with my concerns. Why?
This is public comment, anyone can come and speak to us.
Right, I did not know this until two weeks ago to the Department of Social Services Behavior Unit that they assigned to my son through school recommendation that there was this open meeting today. I was not told that, my ass about it.
Yeah, we're not.
We're not supposed to talk about specific students.
We're not supposed to talk about specific students.
And I wrote you guys a letter also.
I understand you're frustrated and, and I'm sorry that, that you're going through this, I really am. We'll see what we can do and try to make sure that we, we help you and your son as well. That's all, that's all I can say at this moment.
And when will I would know, what, if you can help me with my son?
We will make sure that we follow through on our side with, with the situation. That's all I can, I can promise you from our side.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Just so you know, information, if you follow the, the policy going through, I, I appreciate that. If it's documented, it helps everybody else out as well.
Yes, documented, since second grade.
That's all, that's all we can ask.
And the school has failed, I'm sure not only my son, I'm sure a lot of other sons and daughters have gone through the same thing with the no fail policy that Beaventown, only Beaventown School has.
Well, thank you for letting us know. All right, anyone else?
Yes, I just wanted to.
What's your name, sir?
Tom Wood. In the past, I am not aware of it this year, but in the past, when we had elections, which is coming up next week, we've had, we've sometimes had, in an auditorium, we've had all the candidates come in, different people or organization, whether it's legal voters or whatever, ask questions, or the audience ask questions, and I'd like to see that happen again. It's very difficult to, I'm not saying that anybody here is, you know, not a good person in that, but you like to hear from all the candidates when, when they are running. Appreciate that, if you could do that.
All right, thank you very much. All right, if that's it for public session right now, there's another one later, somebody needs some time. We'll go straight to presentations. So right now, you have an amazing retirement, thirty years. Mr. Orr has been at the district and helped us stay out of trouble. That's an amazing accomplishment.
So it's my distinct pleasure on behalf of the district and all the students and all the teachers and all the administrators who benefit from the great work of Glenn Orr. When you leave this library and you go down to the Eagle Mart and you look down that hallway, it always glistens and it glows and you may hear some Irish music as well. That's the, that's the hallway that Glenn, that's one of the hallways that Glenn works on. And the standard he sets for the Beaventown Central School District and the cleanliness that he's given us, that when you were working, previously you worked days, everybody was always thankful to have Glenn here. It's going to be a huge loss. I have told Glenn that when he does want to work here, we're going to, we'll find, whenever we can, we'll definitely find work for Glenn. And we wish Glenn many happy trails, because you guys might not know, Glenn is a world traveler and he'll always give us great stories on where he's going. Where was the last, last place you went, Glenn?
Actually, it was just Chicago.
So Glenn has been just terrific to, to know my six years here and it's, he's leaving a legacy and we just can't thank Glenn enough for everything he's done.
I appreciate it.
All right, next we have Mr. Mannix, superintendent of schools.
Now, we're going to go with the North Country Honor.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I missed that, sorry. North Country Honor Flight Run. That's right, team is set. It's ready to present.
Good evening. I would first of all like to thank the board for having us today, for giving us a few minutes to share our PBL project with you. The students have been working very hard on this project and they should be extremely proud of the hard work they have put into it. I am Erin Kelly, I'm just one of the several teachers that work on Team Set, who have the privilege of working with these students every single day. And I am very honored and privileged to introduce you to them tonight so they can share with you their project to benefit the Honor Flight. And we will, they will, I'll let them share that. So we have Sylvia and Lacey and Erica and Peyton and Ryan and Christian. So you guys have the floor, share your words.
North Country Honor Run, US Oval Walk, May eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. We run so they can fly. Beaventown Middle School Team Set seventh grade students have been working with the North Country Honor Flight for an extended amount of time. On nine eleven, we brought the veterans in for a question and answer panel. Also in October, we watched a movie with the veterans. We are looking forward to spending more time with them along the way.
Team Set has been split up into five committees that have different tasks to complete. Some students went to local businesses to ask for sponsorships. Other students sent professional emails to businesses. We are working on mail call cards for the veterans on the flight. One group of students is planning what types of fundraising activities will be at the venue that day. And another group is working on race logistics. Many students have been given presentations. We all have a part in this project.
Throughout the course of this project, we have learned many new skills. Some of these skills are being able to present to groups, handle professional media, send emails, and make professional phone calls. We have learned to work well with peers on one task. This project has shown us how to be part of something that is bigger than us and being able to get, to give something without giving something away.
North Country Honor Run 5K, US Oval Walk to benefit the North Country Schools on May eighteenth. Will take place after the Honor Flight ceremony. He kicks off the motor feet of veterans to be careful. We have more than just the races. We have first, second, and third place medals for the race and costume contests. The whole idea of the Honor Run is to raise twelve thousand dollars for another Honor Flight trip to Washington DC. The ceremony is at seven AM and the 5K race starts at.
There will be family-friendly fun activities and games as well. The fundraiser festivities will take place after the ceremony. This will include the 5K Run and US Oval Walk, face painting, a dunking booth, grounds house, coffee with the veterans, mechanical pig races, VR presentation, scavenger mail call cards, and so many more fun activities. This will truly be a memory and a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for everyone.
Students put their creative mark on this event. Our slogan, logo, poster, brochure, business cards, pamphlets, blog site, and radio ad were all designed and created by students. These works of art are professional and all over the community.
Here are some pictures of students out in the community asking local businesses for sponsorships and donations. Here are some pictures of students working in the classroom. Each event for the venue is organized by students and planning phases were very important. Students presented in all of the BCST buildings as well as to the Sunrise Rotary.
This radio ad was written and recorded by students. It was sponsored and paid for by Palmyra Cool 105 through 106.7 WIZN. We also created a commercial for our Facebook page using this radio ad.
Run so they can fly. Join Beaventown seventh graders on May eighteenth at the North Country Honor Run 5K and US Oval Walk in Plattsburgh, New York. Co-seeds will benefit the North Country Honor Run. Participants will escort the veterans and their hurricanes at Clapham International Airport where they will take off from Washington DC. Run, walk, or even cheer to show your appreciation for our local hometown heroes on Armed Forces Day. We're going to take you out of gear, load up the fam, and join the whole community to make this the biggest time off military on-flight has ever had. Register online to add around that coast event. Sponsored by Camzone, the road free company, and Cool 105.
This message is brought to you by Plattsburgh Roadarooter.
Hi, Kelsey here with Plattsburgh Roadarooter, offering general plumbing services, repairs, drain cleaning, and most complete septic service, which includes camera inspections along with high-pressure jetting. As always, best name, best service, best price.
Run so they can fly.
So thank you and we hope to see you there.
Urgent.
So how about before we begin with the other parts of the board meeting, you're free to stick around and, and listen to the rest of the board meeting, or you're welcome to, to leave. It's up, it's up to you. There's a budget presentation and a couple other presentations, so feel free to stay or.
Very excited.
Could I say something first? I'm Executive Secretary of North Country Honor Flight and we are going to have a flight named after you. I don't know if it's going to be this year or next year, but there's definitely going to be a flight named after you.
That was a good idea, man.
Don't be sad.
Yeah, go ahead. That was a good idea. Give him a, a.
It's getting late. Okay. So we do have the budget presentation, which will stop the meeting at seven o'clock and do the budget presentation for the community. Discussion items on the agenda are, there is the pergium nurse. For those of you that don't know, that's a, that's a substitute nurse contract that we engage with, so we have one particular person who can know the ins and outs of our, of our nursing offices. And we contracted that person for about a hundred and twenty days? Oh, seventy, seventy-five days, sorry. So it's one, it's one particular nurse that will be our substitute for seventy-five days. We guarantee them that, that income and then return, we guarantee, we receive that person coming in. It's worked well, it's worked well for us. There's a nursing, there's a substitute shortage across the whole school district, across all school districts. This is one way to, to help with that. It's not perfect, but that helps. The SRO contract is in the, is on the agenda as well, very similar to the previous years. I know there was some thought that there was going to be significant change to the SROs, but that was all politics and the reality is, this is the contract that's available to us. Our school physician contract is also on the agenda. The school physician contract has decreased a little bit this year because the school physician is no longer doing, will no longer conduct the school bus driver physicals on school property. We'll outsource that to, it's an entity that does that through policies, will be reimbursed, it's reimbursable. And it's about a wash, it's pretty close to being a wash for us. It just wasn't working well to have our bus drivers come in to our nursing office with kids and there you have a physical. So, but she is having, there's a decrease in her pay because there's a decrease in the services. You'll see in here the substitute rate that's increased and that's just to comply with minimum wage. Sticking on the topic of substitutes, this isn't on the agenda, but it's something to look forward to in July. We want to incentivize substitutes coming to the district and being here more often and we will be doing a cost-benefit analysis and bringing to the Board of Education on what would happen if we could incentivize subs to, to be here. Look, and I'm just giving you an example, if they were here forty days, could we give them an additional compensation? It's like a bonus. And what we would have in return is people may pick us over another school because if they, if they, if they come for us, eventually they'll, they'll have that bonus that other schools are not offering. So we are looking at a number of ways to increase our sub participation from those that are in the sub market. That's just one particular way. You'll see the Gear Up MOA, the Gear Up MOA, we met with them and we did solidify our concerns about student data and we've sent home notes to parents and a follow-up, the benefits of being in the Gear Up Grant Program. So we're looking forward to passing that and moving forward with that federal grant opportunity for the school district. And there's also two consortium MOAs, our health insurance consortium is redefining the Board of Directors and putting labor representatives on the Board of Directors and to do that, we need all the participating districts to, not all, you need a certain number of participating school districts to approve that agenda item. Not on the agenda is the Capitol Project, I got to tell you, I think it's going along really, really well. Hopefully you'll see the nice Capitol Project reports that I forward you and some information that comes across from Mr. Apol Scott. His, I, his contract is on here, I'll talk about that in just a second. But the, you'll see a crane out in front really soon to start laying the metal for the Learning Theater, otherwise previously known as a large construction area. And the track is going particularly well. Two, we did, we are keeping a close eye on everything. It became, we became aware that the retaining wall, which looks beautiful, was off about three inches and they are going to actually take some of the bricks back off and compact it to make sure that it's a, it's a level wall. So it's nice to have that level of expertise watching over the, the project and we feel really good about the contract. good about the contractors and who's watching them. So, that's been great. And also, there's something that we want to talk about in the coming months about having a Hall of Fame for the Beaventown Central School District. My proposal to you would be to consider, and it will be coming, but just to kind of plant the seed, would it be considered a two-pronged or two-Hall Hall of Fame? One for maybe athletic achievement, and the other for either contributions and academic achievement. So, I think, you know, you have various levels of support in the community for, I think, both of those, and it could be a, it could be a really worthwhile endeavor. Most school districts do have those types of Hall of Fames, and it's nice to recognize tremendous achievements and tremendous contributions to the Beaventown Central School District. Memorialize that in a Hall of Fame. So, we want to look forward to maybe moving in that direction in the coming months. Oh, and Mr. Scott's contract is on here as well. He has worked for us now for about three years. He started out with ELT. He also then helped us with, is now helping us with ELT and the grant, and the Capital Project. I think when we originally started ELT, we paid benefits, FICA, retirement, included health insurance, and $60,000 to somebody to handle that particular component. To have Mr. Scott for 190 days at the rate without paying the ancillary fringe benefits, I think it's a great bargain for the Beaventown Central School District. A lot of the compensation is going to be either grant-funded or funded through the Capital Project, which will be reimbursed 80% of that. So, the real, the true cost to the school community is very, very, very small for the benefit of the oversight. I'll give you one example of oversight. It was today, Joanne, we were talking earlier about how busy we were today, and there was a project meeting at 11 o'clock, and to know that Mr. Scott was in the project meeting and was also our construction manager there as well. I felt very, very comfortable that we were very well represented in that and attend to other serious matters. I do make those meetings regularly, but there's times when I can't be everywhere, and I know that Mr. Scott can be there as a great benefit to the school district. So, those are the items that are on today's agenda, and we'll have more discussion as they come up. Yeah, look, we can go to...
This is the manager.
I'm just going to go over TRS Reserve, which is a, with the new enacted budget, we are now able to do the New York State Teachers Retirement Reserve, which is new. And the Board of Education has the ability to approve a resolution establishing the reserve, which is a sub-fund of the Retirement Contribution Reserve. So, we already actually have a reserve for the Employee Retirement System, the ERS system, and this would be a sub-fund of that reserve. Okay? So, it doesn't have to, we don't have to create a new reserve, it's actually just a sub-fund. So, all you would have to do as a Board of Education is approve a resolution. And the contributions into the TRS Reserve in any particular year cannot exceed 2% of the total compensation or salaries of the teachers employed at the school district. And then, the balance of the TRS Reserve may not exceed 10% of the total compensation or salaries of teachers employed at the school. So, those are the stipulations with that new reserve. Mr. Mannix and I have been discussing that we would like to bring that resolution to you next month for your consideration. And then, in order to be able to fund it, we, as we've discussed, we've been talking about the BOSSY's Capital Project, and we're looking at the year's excess funds at the end. We'd like to look at the BOSSY's Capital Project and the TRS Reserve and see how much we can put into, sum into either both, one or the other. So, that's what we're going to hopefully have to, next board meeting, have everything finalized for that.
So, you don't anticipate it affecting the tax anyway?
No. No, this would only be, we'd only put money that we would have excess this year into it at this point. So, we wouldn't, and use our fund if we needed to use some of our fund balance. So, we'll bring you guys a proposal to see what you think. Just to give you guys a, start thinking about it.
We can throw them on.
Okay, all right. Minutes as presented, the result of the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes in a motion. This is for minutes of 4:23 and 4:25. Any motion?
Second.
Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
No's or abstains? Motion passes. Okay, resolve that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CSE, CPSE, and 504 recommendations dated 5/14/19. Any motion?
Motion.
A second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No abstains? Motion passes. Personnel approvals. Personnel. Resolve that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following personnel resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, appointments, interim district administrator, employment agreement, school attorney, and per diem nurse employment agreement be and are hereby approved. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? The manager already went over some of the details on a lot of these. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
No's or abstains? Motion passes. Miscellaneous. Resolve that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following miscellaneous resolutions on this consent agenda, SRO agreement, 2019-2020 MOU with Lori Robinson, unsealing and opening the ballot boxes, substitute rate increase, salary increases, and agreement between CFEs and BCSD be and are hereby approved. Motion?
Motion.
A second.
Discussion? Question? All in favor?
Aye.
No's or abstains? Motion passes. All the way over, the next one is. Amendment to Restated Municipal Cooperation Agreement. Adopt the Second Amendment and Restated Municipal Cooperation Agreement, whereas the district is a party to an amended and restated municipality municipal cooperation agreement under Article 5G of the General Municipal Law for the purpose of providing employee and retiree health insurance coverage. And whereas the Board of Directors recommends amending the MCA to add labor representative to the Board of Directors and to provide a method of merged school districts to continue in the consortium. Be it therefore resolved that the district approved proposed Second Amendment and Restated Municipal Cooperation Agreement, which will then be operative upon the affirmation vote of two-thirds of all participating districts in accordance with Section T of the MCA. This is a roll call vote.
If you give a motion first?
Oh, I need a motion, yeah.
I'll give a motion.
All right. Thanks for keeping me out of trouble.
Second.
Now, if you do a roll call.
Douglas Beebe, Kathy Buckley, Jeremy Connors, Michael Haggadorn, Holden Lehman, Ed Maren, Crystal Palmer, Mark Sands, Pauline Stone.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Do we want to break now?
Yep, 7 o'clock.
Yeah, we'll break. Have the budget presentation and then come out.
I want to see Ed read this.
Hopefully somebody will say, "Move the motion."
We can do it really easy.
What did you send it in?
I'm sharing with Jen, right?
As on the team drive or?
Yeah, into the... Google's lights just shared it. So, it should be in a review.
Okay, thank you for your patience. So, as we've said at every board meeting since about January, maybe December, this year, really, the big cost driver that we had to wrestle with, just like last year, was health insurance and the high cost of the benefits. We also know the high-cost driver for us is the mandated retirement system. We have no say in that. That's a benefit driver for us as well. Those high-cost benefits impact us, they also impact our CDES rates at a really high level. So, those are the main cost drivers that you're going to see in today's presentation that take up most of our state aid for program. With that being said, our mission statement, it does drive us, it is our mission of the district to educate, in the community, to educate our individuals to be quality contributors to society itself, and we definitely take that mission very seriously, and it drives our program.
Will we exceed the 2% tax cap? And as we all know, 2% really doesn't mean 2%, it's a calculation we came up with. So, our tax cap was 2.56, and no, we are not going to exceed that cap. And tax rates are lower today than they were in 2006, 2007.
Okay, so, we can just show this slide of the year, and I just want to go through this again. With the Board of Education, in about 2013, 2014, we really identified that we didn't want to be trying to live in a scenario where we're going up 12% and then, you know, going at zero or back, you know, 2%, and then the next year asking for 12% again. That roller coaster for the taxpayers was something that the Board of Education back in 2013, 2014 said, "We want to try to find a way to stop that." And so, we really engaged in long-term planning. I know that some of the board members back then, I know Mr. Maren was on the board back then, and I know Mr. Haggadorn started, and Pauline Stone, and there's others, they really pushed for a long-range plan and a multi-year, multi-year planning, and that served us well. Because if you take a look at the tax rates from 2013 to 2019, and if you add in this coming year, you're really looking at a rate increase of about 2.3% year in and year out. So, it served, I think it served our taxpayers well, and I know our district is doing, is doing very well, staying in that, staying in that range right now. The other big thing, the big picture we like people to realize is who is the Beaventown Central School District? You know, people, they look at our budget, they look at our rate, but who is Beaventown Central School District? They compare to all the other districts in the county, and we could expand on that if we needed to. But we are the largest school district in the area. If you see the enrollment rate right here, this does not include our pre-K, and we're the only district to have pre-K 3 and pre-K 4 full day. So, that doesn't include that. So, we're just a little bit bigger than Beaventown, and maybe 100 students bigger or more than, not 100 students or more without pre-K than Plattsburgh, and then there's other districts that you see. We also have, year in and year out, the highest frame reduced lunch rate, and that's basically a poverty indicator. That indicates that we have more students that struggle day in and day out and live near the poverty line or below the poverty line. And then, the FAR number is a number that most people aren't very familiar with, the consumer wealth ratio. You take a look at that ratio, while our students live in poverty, it's unique, our students not, we don't live in poverty, sorry. As we have the highest frame reduced rate in the area, this particular year, Seville Valley's at 53%, they fluctuate up and down. With the consumer wealth ratio, we're right near the top, and average in the state is a 1. So, we're below average in the state. We're at .71. But what drives our consumer wealth ratio is the, all the different businesses that are in our district. So, it allows us to just, it allows the businesses to contribute to the education, I guess, a little bit more. So, that's Beaventown Central School District. We have a high frame reduced rate, we're the largest school district in the area, and that's kind of who we are. And our financial outlook is strong as it stands right now. We did engage the Board and the Operations Committee, really pushed to move into an energy performance contract, which will hopefully be coming to a close within a month or two. The energy performance contract is a contract where a corporation, the Siemens Corporation, came through and outfitted our school district with all kinds of new infrastructure. And if you see these LED lights right here, they're throughout our school district, and they save us tremendous amount of money, and we share that savings with them. So, they provide the infrastructure, and then we share in the savings with the Siemens Corporation. The Capital Project is another really strong, smart move by the Board of Education, because that allowed us to keep that flat tax rate, where we weren't going way down into a negative, and then maybe back up to a positive when we needed to fix our infrastructure. So, I applaud the Board for listening to us, trusting us in that Capital Project. Actually, the good news on our Capital Project too is we went down to the State Education Department, Amy Campbell and I, and we went along with our architect, Garrett Hamlin, and we asked the State Education Department to give us more funding for the Learning Theater, and they came through with $2.5 million more in, I know my phrase is incorrect, but $2.5 million more aidability from the state, which only benefits the taxpayers. So, we have a new calculation on how the Capital Project, it has a, really a smoothing or a negative impact for our, a negative cost impact for our taxpayers. Grants, I'm going to share with you in just a minute. We are always excited about receiving grants and writing grants. It's a lot of work when we receive those grants, but we know that the benefits to our students have been immense, and we're going to keep at it. We just received a couple more grants this week, and we'll talk about them in just a minute. And lastly, Mr. Lambert knows quite well our Smart Schools Bond Act allocation. We've been working on that for a number of years. Governor Cuomo gave us $1.5 million, but he won't release it until we have all the i's dotted and t's crossed and approvals from their... I's dotted and T's crossed and approvals from their organization that meets once every month. But we're just about there. That's another 1.5, well, we need about $1.4 million now. Yeah, $1.4 million. And we have a 12-year Smart Schools Bond Act allocation that I think is one of the only ones in the state that looks, most other districts ask for all the money upfront to do the work. We ask for it to come in over 12 years installments to make sure that we have that long-range financial plan for sustainability for our programming, but also sustainability for our taxpayers and our budget. So those are financial components and they, overall, when you combine all those, we're looking pretty solid.
And the big question, how does the 1920 budget impact you as a taxpayer, board member, employee? So it's going to, the tax rate at this point is estimated to be going up 14 cents per thousand. So what that means, if you have a $100,000 home, your taxes will increase by $14.
That's in a real, go ahead.
Yeah, so that is the estimated amount that we're looking at today.
Yeah. When I look at all the other school districts, I see much larger numbers. I see $80 on a $100,000 home or $54 on a $100,000 home. $14, we're proud of that. I got to tell you that, don't quote us on that though, because there's so many variables that change that number year in and year out. I've been, I've been sitting at my table with officials from the hospital right across and lawyers and there's, they reached a settlement the date, I think it was like June 28th, and that impacted, negatively impacted the taxpayers 10 cents per thousand. So there can be special agreements, and we had to really know, saying, they're making us aware, but we, so these special agreements that we don't control make that number go up and down. So that can happen between now and when the tax bills are finally generated. I think on July, July 1st, somewhere around that time, August, July 1st.
August.
So our budget priorities are, obviously, we want to keep our eye on the ball and that's improving student opportunities by faithfully implementing our goals, which align to our mission and vision. We do a lot of work at the board level and at the administrative level with our goals. We adopted two-year goals and they really drive us. They are, they become kind of who we are and we keep a laser that focus on those. And our goals really do help us produce a world-class learning environment that has sustainable programming and offerings. Back when we first started the budget process, a lot of board members were like, "If we hire somebody new, we don't want to have to lay them off two or three years later." So we've tried to really maintain that focus on what is sustainable? And if we're going to put it into play, how do we put it into play so it's sustainable but also world-class? Great, a great program to look at that's new is our ag program. Another great program to look at that's new and sustainable is our technology offerings. They are very, very, very solid and kids love them. Also this year, we're looking to enhance our college credit classes by implementing offerings through Clinton Community College named Brilliant Pathways, which is formerly known as college for every student. Now it's Brilliant Pathways because neither that institution or we believe that every student needs to go to college. We want those to be quality contributors to society itself. That really means leaving either college or Beaton Town, meaning find employment. And then at the, and the Brilliant Pathways will have a bigger footprint at the middle school and both elementary schools. And then lastly, we, over the last few years, really looked at expenditures which allow for reimbursements to come back. And I just talked about one a minute ago, where we have BOSI's reimbursements, where we receive 50% of every dollar back, 54% of every, 54 cents on every dollar we spend from BOSI's. Building aid is about 80 cents on every dollar back and transportation aid is about 70 cents on every dollar back. So those are, it's nice when you have an allocation where you can actually build up a program, but then receive a large portion of that back in next year's aid. And this is one of my favorite pages. This is the new page. And the items that are bolded are new grants, which we've received over the last four years. And some of those, just like one particular, we didn't apply for, we just received it. That's the Title IV Part A grant. And then the other grants, UPK grants, the local grants, the TDC grants, the Siemens grants, there's another Siemens grant coming in for $25,000. P-Tech gear up in ELT, we wrote all those grants. So that number was previously about a million plus, around a million plus. Now we're right, we're probably over $5 million in grants every single year. And that's had a tremendous, tremendous impact on what we're able to offer our teachers in terms of professional development, our administrators in terms of professional development, and our students. So we look, we keep writing another grant that's not on there that we just received. I think it was, it was less than a week ago, was $20,000 for cafeteria line equipment. So that's a nice, it's a nice new grant that allows us, and we're going to try to receive that every single year, to keep our cafeteria infrastructure, you know, moving forward and doing the job it needs to do for our kids.
And this is a look at our state aid. So as you can see, just over $22 million. Our foundation aid is all based on enrollment. And community school is fairly new too, that you guys have been receiving. BOSI's aid is what Mr. Manish just talked about. It's the aid where you receive back on the purchase services. So that's the 54% back that we get. High cost and private cost are special ed-driven. So those are our students that we can receive aid on. Hardware and technology, software, library and textbook, those are all, those are 100% based on your enrollment and given to us by the state. So as I call it, that's, you want to spend that money because it's free money. From the state, they're giving it to you to spend on the students. We make sure we spend every penny of that because if you don't, you don't get the same amount the following year. So those are completely given to us by your state. Transportation is also what we spoke about. We get about 70% back on our transportation costs. Building aid, that's just the EPC project broken out there. That's the aid we get back on specifically the EPC project. And then our building aid, as you can see, that went up significantly because you're also going to see in another slide that the expense went up. So our expense went up because we're going to have a BAN due for the $18 million project that we're working on right now. But we also get the aid back on it. So the aid went up here. So they offset.
Administration, the administration component of our budget is laid out pretty clearly right there. The two large issues there in particular are driven by, our legal fees are increasing significantly. We know that Doug Gerhart sat here at the board meeting and we talked about the lawsuits, the lawsuit that was, that we had to defend and all the other claims that we've had to defend successfully. But those come at a high cost. And some of the other expenses, business administration, the increase there, 66.
Added the accountant?
Yeah, they've added the accountant to the budget that was approved from last year. And we moved, you look at a negative in the personnel, we had previously wanted to hire, the board had approved hiring some HR help, but because of the turnover, we waited on that to let things kind of settle. And now we've moved that line, so that negative has moved up to Chief School Administration and that's for a, for either HR or a typist, but some typist, a clerk or something like that. Doing the same functions, but it's just a different, right now it's in a different allocation. And more on, really not many more significant changes there except for employee benefits.
Can I?
Yes.
Question?
Sure.
Operations supervisor, is that Mr. Scott?
No, operations supervisor would be Mr. Noonan.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be Mr. Noonan. And that would be, I don't know if that's just his pay or pay, that would just be just his pay.
That's several different, there's material and supplies and, if you don't, there's a lot in that account code.
Thanks, Jen.
Yep. Okay, next we'll move on to program. So there are, this was a rollover budget, so there's not a lot of large increases here. A lot of it is just salary increases. On that first page, that's pretty much all there is there. There were no other increases. On the continued page, again, very minimal increases. The only very, very large increase you will see is down at the bottom at employee benefits. Of the $1.7 million increase, 1.2 of that is employee benefits. And that all stems from the health insurance.
Did you see there down in the lower left-hand corner, that's our new tech program and at work and the second ELT, our home careers program. And I know that's one of our forensics teacher and science teacher, Mr. Ross, up in the left-hand corner. And capital, moving on to capital.
Capital, again, the big increase you're going to see there is in the debt service. And like I mentioned before, that's the payment for the BAN that we're going to be receiving. So we saw where we're going to get the revenue on it and this is where the expense is going to be. So they offset. So that's really the only large increase and all the rest are salary and benefits, related. And where does our money come from? So this is just a quick overview. As you can see, state aid is about 48%. The local share, the levy that the taxpayers pay is about 46%. And then 6% other. And in that includes Medicaid reimbursements, Medicare Part D reimbursements, the Clinton County reimbursements we get, interest earnings is also in there. So there's a lot of little things that add up to the 6%. But in, all in all, it's about a 50-50 split between state aid and the health insurance.
We also have a busing proposition on the ballot and we're looking to trade in or sell four buses and purchase four new buses. We receive 70, basically 71% of that money back in state aid. So it's a pretty nice proposition from the taxpayer standpoint. I would tell you that the, we had a, we had a company come in and research, what does the Beaton Town Central School District need for transportation? And they said, what you really need, this is five or six years ago, what you really need is four buses, purchase four buses one year and then three buses the next year. Since that time, our population has grown, so we have more runs or more students to pick up. But also on top of that, with all those grants, we also have far more field trips and far more extracurricular offerings. So we are traveling more with our students and giving them more opportunities. So that's why we now, we've moved over the last three years now to a four and four proposition to the voters. Sell that four and offer four. And then the other component proposition on the ballot is with the Dodge Library. And we conducted a lot of research, actually a lot of research went into this way before I became the superintendent, I think it was back to three superintendents. But the Dodge Library was donated to the school district many, many, many years ago and with the stipulation that it'd just be used as a library for the West JZ community. And it made a lot of sense because it was attached to the West JZ school, which we've since sold. So now we have this one building out there and it's really been run by a great organization known as the Dodge Library Association. And they've asked for it for a number of years and we've tried to figure out how we're going to do that. And there was a subcommittee of the board formed last year and I know they met with the Dodge Library Association. And we were really putting it forward to the taxpayers, saying, "Let's give this to the entity that's really, has a desire to oversee this library and they've been doing a great job." And we don't, we don't have any real value in the library in terms of other taxing authorities. We can't sell that library as an asset because then we'd be breaking the promise when we receive the Dodge Library. So keeping it as a library, giving it to the Dodge Library Association, I speak on behalf of the board, it's just the right thing to do. So we hope the voters agree. So now it's time for any questions, but before we start with the open questions, we'd like to have, we'd like to discuss, there was a question brought up at the last meeting. We just want to kind of put that out there in an open session.
You had asked about capital reserve. Thank you. So there is only one capital reserve. Okay, and it was voted on, the reserve was originally created by the voters in May of 2016. It was originally used to be used for the $18 million project we're doing now, but then it was reestablished, so voted on again in May of 2017 to support future capital projects. So before that money, there is, at the moment, there's about $555,000 in that reserve. That money cannot be spent until the voters were, would approve the spending of that money. So at this time, it's just in there for future capital projects. Just, thank you.
There was discussion at the boardroom about the need down the road to rebuild a bus garage. And that's why they didn't, two reasons why, they didn't apply the money to this capital project. One was the bus garage, was it going to be a new bus garage? And that, that's $500,000 could offset the taxpayer share for a new bus garage. And the other reason why is because we needed analysis of the numbers and with the state aid and the trade-offs that Jen Palmer just talked about, we knew that there would be no impact to the taxpayers with the way we crafted this capital project. So putting money, taxpayer money down on something that doesn't impact the taxpayers, we thought wouldn't be the best move. We thought, why not save that money? Now, that bus garage is going to need to be replaced and the voters then approved that money to, again, have maybe down the road have a bus garage with no impact to the taxpayers. That was one idea that was discussed at the board table back in 16 or 17. So any other questions, any questions? I know we've talked about this for a number of months, but we have community members who are new here, any questions on the taxes in Beaton Town?
I have two questions.
Yes.
So for the, the EPC with Siemens and the energy assessment, is that factoring in or looking at fuel costs? Do you just noticing on one thing, fuel cost budget is proposed higher?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question.
And if not, can we look at that in the future?
Yeah, so Siemens is actually looking at that right now. And you can jump in at any time, Jen. Siemens is looking at that right now because their fuel costs should be lower, all things being equal, should be lower. So we have to do an analysis on, you know, fuel costs have risen a little bit. You see they're about, you know, just go to the pump and you're looking at $3 per gallon. But you also have to factor in the weather. I know it started getting really cold in November this year. So did we, did we raise the heat? But we do think that there is something wrong with the, we think there could be something wrong with the system they put in, but we want to do an analysis to make sure that if there is, it's fixed. What else do you have on that, Jen?
Well, the EPC also has written in their contract too that we're guaranteed a certain amount of savings. So if we're not seeing that savings, they have to reimburse us. So that's what we're looking at right now is, okay, this was the savings we were supposed to see, bearing no, this winter was longer and colder than most. So, but we're looking at all those factors and Siemens is looking at all those factors to see why there is such a discrepancy. And then we may get reimbursed for the differences in the future. So we are looking into that now.
And that's a big part of the EPC because it's guaranteed savings. It's not theoretical savings. Guaranteed, if we don't receive the savings.
They would make us whole.
That company, Siemens Corporation pays us the balance. That's a really good question, something we were worried about.
One other question for the, I think you answered this with Mike, so like the SRO officer contract is $89,000 and change and budget 98, is that just other?
You talking about the community schools?
Yeah, the school resource officer. So in the, you know, paperwork, we're getting contracts like $89,000. I think you said to Mike, there's some other factors in that line.
Right, yes, yeah. Like materials and supplies and contractual, yes. Great, thank you.
Okay, community members, other board members, Mr. Haggen.
Can you give us an update on ELT grant? First we had it for three years and then just lost track of where we are.
Yeah, it's a tough one. It's a tough one, it's a moving target for sure. So we applied for a three-year grant and we were rejected. And then actually they came in and said, in July of whatever year it was, four years ago, and said, "Hey, we're going to give you the ELT grant that you applied for because a couple of other schools couldn't do it. But we're, we're not going to give you six months to plan, we're going to give you 60 days if you want to do it. We're only going to give it to you for two years." So we had a lot of talk with community right in here about, is this something we want to do because it's two years of really nice, you know, 3.1 million. Because it's two years of really nice, you know, $3.1 million or just under that. And you can do a lot of great things, but then that's gone. And talked about, yeah, we would do it because you wouldn't say to your family that we can go on a vacation, but we're not going to be able to go on a vacation every single year. So you wouldn't go on, you wouldn't say, we're not going to go on vacation. So we looked at it as something that could be transformative for a short period of time, two years. And then the third year, they kind of showed up at the last minute and said, oh, by the way, this is in the budget. So we had to scramble again and implement ELT for the third year. And I think this is, I'm going to lose track now, but this year's the first year, I think this is, is this the fourth year, Mary?
This is the fourth year.
Are we going to the fourth or going to...
We're going to the fifth.
We're going to the fifth.
We're going to the fifth, right.
So the fourth year, the fourth year, we knew about it early, but they didn't fund us until January. So we had, we had a hard time getting going because there weren't any funds, or, yeah, until January. And the board made a big move, we talked about it, Mary Blaine helped us with that, and so did, so did the grant coordinator, who had a lot of experience with big grants in Downstate, helped us with a method to move forward. And then this year is the earliest we've ever been notified. So this year we have ELT, we're aware, right after the budget was passed, and we're going to solidify everything moving forward. And we'll be able to, for instance, when we wrote through first grant, we'll be able to provide all of our students with summer camp opportunities if they so choose from the Beakman Town Youth Commission. And that actually works out well for us because we run a summer feeding program, so we can send the kids to camp that they want to go to for free. And as we feed them, we actually get reimbursed, and it can be a revenue generator for us and also help the community members. Does that help you with the ELT?
Yep, so we have it for next year.
So we've got it for next year.
Back in the drawing board.
And then, yeah, who knows? Who knows? But we're the only district, so we were told yesterday at our administrative meeting that, I knew, I've always found that we were the only district to implement a K-12, and I think we might be the only district that's still utilizing the ELT money. I think that's what was, is that what Shelley said? You're not going to commit to that right now?
I'm...
I think that's what she said.
I'm going to shake my head and that's, but I think...
All right. So, yeah, there's not, most districts have found that they couldn't implement it or whatever happened. But it works well for us, it works really well for us, the opportunities our kids receive is tremendous.
Could you guys elaborate on the food program?
The what?
The food program.
Sure. So we, as a district, going back for a number of years, had to supplement the cafeteria to the tune of $100,000, $150,000, because you have health insurance and all kinds of costs rolled into the cafeteria. And, you know, it was doing an important job, but it was only really feeding about 20% of our kids. And along came an opportunity when our free reduced lunch number got to a particular level. And it was to move into this, this program where we could provide all of our students with free breakfast and free lunches. And if we received a certain rate at which we fed, if we let, if we reached a certain rate at which we feed the kids, we would break even or even make money. And also we could make more money if our, if our free reduced lunch rate increased. And the rate at which we needed to move from was 20% of our students participating in lunch program or breakfast program, and we needed to move it to about 70%, which was a huge, huge lift to ask, you know, essentially 50% of the kids that didn't eat your school lunch to start eating your school lunch. And it was amazing to see how everybody pulled together and started broadcasting this to the school community. And now we hit, we hit our levels. And now, actually, what we see is the district, it's amazing, really, when you think about it, right? The district has to reimburse far less into the cafeteria, and what, and our community gets fed. And so this is the most important stat that I've heard. This might be more important stat than any student achievement stat improvement that I've, that I've heard. But Roxy told me that she can never figure out why in December the lunch and breakfast rate went down. And then when we received, when we had the grant, it stayed the same or went up a little bit. And she attributes it to kids don't have to decide on whether they're going to eat or buy their mom or dad or brother or sister a Christmas present. And just think about that. And we think about the stress we used to have in the cafeteria asking kids to, that were charging for lunches because didn't have any, and then you had to go knock on the door and say, you owe us this amount of money. We don't have those conversations anymore. When a kid's hungry in Beakman Town, the kid eats. And so we're saving money as a district, and I think homes are saving, being able to put money in their pocket. If you had three kids, I think you're going to be able to save about $5,000, I think Eric Bell did that calculation. So it's a, it's kind of a piece of what we're very prideful of. And I know we're able to give our students everything they need to be, to be successful from a nutrition standpoint. On top of that, we gave, we found out that we could have a snack program because we're in ELT, only because we're in ELT. And we get reimbursed for that at a higher rate, so we give the kids a snack, it costs us about 54 cents, but we get 65 cents for those. We give a kid a snack, and we make a dime, we have 2,000 kids, you can snack every day, those dimes add up. It's been really wonderful. Other questions about this year's budget? And we have a couple people over here, do you have a question? About where we wrap up?
Another question.
Sure.
Dr. Grinboz Funes, some of you know me. Could you just review the increase in the healthcare benefits from one year to the next?
Well, I'll...
I'm sorry, I haven't, I tried to get the budget, but there was only one left, and so I couldn't really see it all. But, you know, the reason why I'm bringing this up is because it seems like the benefits just every year keep on going up consistently. And it does for all of us, I mean, it does for my health insurance as well. I don't understand, and I don't have the intricacies, but you obviously do, how it works with the unions, with the employees, what's your obligation as to what you have to do. But across the rest of the country, we're all accepting a little bit more of the cost of our benefits. And, you know, the Beakman Town School District, certainly my neighbors, a lot of them are in fixed incomes, they're retirees, and I'm about there myself. And we just got our assessments, and it's painful. I mean, it's painful, to the point where, you know, after being here for 27 years, I really have to consider whether I'm going to leave the community because I don't know that I can keep it up. And I'm a physician, and everybody thinks we make all this money, but this is Clinton County, we're the, actually, the most poorest reimbursed county in the nation, in the nation. So the point I'm trying to make is, I've got people that are retired, I'm going to retire, I'd like to know what my future is. And I'm trying to figure out if there's a way that we can all sort of, you know, accept the pain. And I don't know, because I really don't know what happens in terms of the contracts with the unions, what can happen, what can't. But I know I worked for University of Vermont, and the part that I have to pay for my health insurance has gone up this year, it goes up every year. But I don't know if that's something you guys negotiate, what happens. And I did notice that the cost of healthcare benefits goes up, and that's one of the things we always talk about, well, we have to pay for insurance and this and that. And I'm wondering if that's something that can be tweaked a little bit? And I'd like to know.
Sure. So the answer is, well, the answer was, yes, it could be tweaked. And Beakman Town was the first district in the county to engage in that tweak. And I know it was my first year here. And there is no secondary, there isn't a secondary plan, sorry, there isn't a third plan to move to right now within the consortium. So they're on the lowest level plan offered in the consortium that whole bargaining units have moved to. That being said, so there was a reduction, an 18% reduction in our benefits, in our costs, excuse me, when there was that transition. So I've always applauded the administrative union, the supervisors, the teachers, the support staff presence that's right behind me, for being the most courageous bargaining units to move there because they were told that they'd all go bankrupt. They were told by their union leaders that they would all be super painful. And they, they said, well, what's painful right now is, is all the cuts we've had at the Beakman Town Central School District. And we've done really, really well for a number of years because we did negotiate to the lowest level plan. But what happened, and I know you, you may not like this, but everybody sees the green signs now where there used to be CVPA signs. Do you guys see those signs? Vermont Healthcare, right? You see those signs?
Yep.
The day those signs went up, our rates went up. And last year was the first year, and our rates went up, what, how much was it?
10% mid-year. We've never, since I've been doing this, we've never had a mid-year increase.
10% and then 13%. And really, the only change, there was two changes, there were some more high costs. We don't know why they were more high costs, and the costs were higher.
But the costs, the costs is with the plan, right?
Sure, I'll just finish for a second.
Sure.
So it was a 10% and then a 13%, so it was a 26, 23% increase...
In a year.
In a year, which we never had before, and...
And now we have another 13%.
And now we have another 13% increase. So, yeah, there's a lot of work to do in negotiations, but some of that might not just be with our unions, it might be with the, the main driver of healthcare in the area, which is now basically monopoly. And it would be Vermont, in my belief, as somebody who sits on, somebody sits on board directors...
Yeah, but they're a provider, they're not your insurance plan. Your insurance plan agrees to participate with a provider, and they're the ones that reach, you know, they're just a provider. I mean, I work for that provider, but there's insurance plans that, and I'm an employee just like everybody else is, who work for Beakman Town, I'm an employee. That's out of my control. But the thing is, insurance plans reach negotiations with University of Vermont or Serenac Lake or wherever, right?
You got it. They reach negotiations with that, with those entities. And when you have monopoly, you don't, negotiations are harder because only one entity says, take it or leave it. So we have negotiations to do. It is going to be with bargaining units down the road, but it's also with the new provider, and now the single-titering provider we have in the area. And they aren't just a provider, but those providers charge us a fee, they charge us a cost. And what I'm going to tell you is, from information we received back, is those costs have gone up significantly. And also when you walk in, they're more efficient. So you may walk into the emergency room, and you would know this far better than I because Mike used to work in there, but I think they scan more things now when you go into the emergency room. So there's more costs. And before, when I went in, I might not have paid for, I don't know, a gown or something. But now you're getting paid, you're paying, your visit to the emergency room has gone up because there's more costs being added in. So I applaud you for pointing out that health insurance is all based on, truly on negotiations. We have one entity which we can negotiate with, that doesn't help us very much. It really does seem like a monopoly. And we have two plans which we can negotiate to. The board director says, actually, we just passed two resolutions tonight to help make our health insurance plan more solid. And by allowing those, by allowing, we negotiated with, with the administrative union, the support staff unions, and the teachers, to give them representation and say, and when doing that, we're actually going to be decreasing costs, like we're going to be engaging in telemed, which is something that isn't, and widely used around here, which will decrease our costs. We'll be able to educate our members better on not going to the emergency room because it's far more expensive than going to, to...
Their primary care provider.
Their primary care provider, or even the other type of, emergency type of service, urgent cares. So there's a lot of things we need to do that are outside of negotiation, well, it's a negotiation, I mean, it's an education component too. So you are spot on on a lot of your, on a lot of your questions, but there, make no mistake about it, there's a, the big green sign that we now see everywhere, that we only see across the lake, has had tremendous impact on that cost, that's hurting all, hurting all of us.
I'm sorry to hear that. No, I truly am.
Me too.
I truly am because, you know, University of Vermont's a tertiary care institution and, you know, research and training programs, and I'm a part of that. But this wasn't supposed to happen.
This wasn't supposed to happen. And I got to tell you that my son was exceptionally sick, and we took, we, we can't thank Vermont Healthcare enough for the care we received, it was superior. So they do a great job, but the cost, the cost has gone up. So how do we, how do we balance that out? They do a great job?
We probably do our best for the community. You know, but I will tell you, just, just in their defense, that no one gets turned away. No one gets turned away.
Right.
When I was in private practice, we could only afford so much, and we actually were going under. So that's why my practice, everybody thinks we got bought out. No one paid us a penny. We went under, and we became employees, that's the way it is. But before, it was a financial issue, what, who could we afford to see, I mean, Medicaid was taking us under. And now we see everybody, the payment is not an issue. So everybody absorbs that. And University of Vermont absorbs it. And let me tell you, there's some issues because the only way to improve it, or improve that bottom line, is by seeing more patients. And right now, we can't get providers. We can't get people to come up here.
Right.
I mean, it's, we've been looking for people for our practice since August.
So I also wanted, actually, just to point a finger, just UVM, there's a prescription drug issue too. So we have a prescription drug, and we're negotiating there. So the board of directors, which now includes labor for the first, first time, and will include labor for the first time in Vermont, is looking at everything to help school districts, you know, manage these costs better. And you're right, we do need to negotiate to other, other, other packages down the road.
I appreciate your answer, thank you.
Good question.
I have another question.
Sure.
Sorry. In regards to the buses and the proposition, you said it was, percentage of that, it was reimbursed about 71%?
Correct.
And I was wondering, with the sale or the trade-in of the other buses, approximately what percentage of the cost is covered by that?
What kind of deal can you get for us, Jen?
It's a very, very minimal, very minimal. If we're really, really, really lucky, we might get $2,000 per bus for a trade. Yeah.
What's the mileage on...
The mileage, the ones that we will be trading are over $100,000.
And second, second question, it's just a general question. Over the, over the time period, this past year and years, and then towards the future, what are the plans or is there, is there a plan or how we would get to energy neutral, energy for the school system? This is obviously a major problem that we have to handle in the next few years. I was wondering if there's anything that you've been planning or looking forward for in terms of that?
Well, the big plan we just, we moved to was the energy performance contract, where we would, you move towards much more cost-effective infrastructure, so that our energy use would be, would be lower. But to, we did put in solar over at Cumberland Head, a significant solar array, which, and we moved natural gas. Do you work for the town, used to work for the town, Jen? So we took a lot of negotiations with NiCIG, and then Mr. Hagman was a big part of that, with NiCIG, the town, and a couple other entities at town, and Beakman Town was very instrumental as well. So we moved natural gas in, and then we're coming to Cumberland Head unless Beakman, unless Beakman Town Central signed on. And it was a long, hard negotiations with a lot of tough conversations. So we have natural gas now, we now have propane, we now have LED lightings. But to be energy neutral, that's another conversation that, you know, I love that conversation. We haven't really thought about it in terms of the school district.
I was thinking maybe for the next few years, are we just looking at it?
Yeah.
How would you go about it? It may not be possible, obviously, in the next few years, but we, you know, planning for that, looking at it.
Yeah, and keeping our eye on, on energy savings is, is key, and what can we do? Are there other solar arrays we could put in? There's been, there has been some, a lot, decent discussion on that. But maybe it's something we need to continue looking at as a board through operations. It's a, it's a nice, it's nice to think about. I honestly haven't thought very much about energy neutral for a school district, for home tests.
I'll, I'll address that a little bit. So part of my background is renewable energy. I have some patents on wind turbines. The environmental problem, resource problem that we have in this part of the country, of course, is that our resource is primarily wind. When it comes to the southwest of the United States, it's solar because of the geography location that it is. So around here, in order to try to do net zero, is one of the big, big discussions where you have an ability to have energy being produced somewhere else, and you get a part of that. That is, if we can tap into either hydro or, or wind, but right now that has not been an option, but it is, it is something to discuss going forward.
For the future, something to look at, and I think that would be more incentive and will be more, a better storage for energy, that's, that's, not saying particularly solar --not say particularly solar or wind that can be stored for the future. So, you know, just looking at long-term, what, you know, I don't, it's not, not saying we're not doing it, just saying, you know, look at it.
Yep. And we, it's a good point. We will continue. I also want to point out that Mike Haggard is instrumental not only in the solar, but we look long and hard at wind, too, but with the wind patterns through here. Well, there were a couple, we thought we could go to local governments like the town of Plasberg, who put a ban on wind turbines, even on Carmel and Head. We thought we could still get a variance or something, but when we did the research, there wasn't enough of a wind pattern to go through there.
You have to look in the methane gas with all the--
Methane gas.
Yeah. That's sort of not, I mean, it's in this area, especially if it's, if there's a lot of buildings, you have to have a much higher tower, and then you have to have enough distance for it to fall. So, there's a lot of, a lot of restrictions with that. Anyway, I did want, could you, you guys discuss a little bit about the other financial component that has impacted us with respect to surges and the tax adjustments to a lot of the big properties, which include the parent corporation, which is the mall, CVPH with all the properties behind Hanafers. Those, those adjustments in taxes have impacted us. And off the top of your head, you have, we've had several million dollars hit of revenue.
We talked before, in one sitting, we had an $8 million hit when CVPH, this is when they, where CVPH petitioned the town for, to be removed from the tax rolls because they're a hospital. And even though they're leasing some of the property behind Hanafers, that was $8 million that came off the tax roll, which impacted the taxpayers to the ring of 10 cents per thousand, because I knew the tax rate that day going in, and then you knew it after we had to recalculate. But those tax, people, just so people understand, when there's a pilot agreement, a payment in lieu of taxes, those don't change our budget. The budget you vote on is the budget we're going to adopt. That's what we spend. But if, if somebody has to pay less taxes, for instance, like the Falcon Seaboard plant with Serenac Power Partners, they call it now, and you see that wrestling match with the city and the town, well, they also pay school taxes. If they have to pay less school taxes, we, as a school district, still have the same budget. It's been voted on, it's been approved. But what that means is, if Warren Buffett, who owns that plant, doesn't have to pay the $32 million, that means everybody else who lives in the school district has to pay that 30, pay their share of that $32 million. So, that's, that's why we fight against pilots. And if we have a pilot coming to the school, in this district, and we want growth in the school district, but we don't want growth for a big corporation like UPS or Warren Buffett or even the Vermont Medical Center at the expense of our taxpayers and then pushing them out of our, out of our school district. So, if they have a pilot, we really think that should be revenue, at least revenue neutral to a school district. And we've worked on spreadsheets and shown, one entity that never moved in here, was willing to do this for us, was Vermont Green Line, which would have been a tremendous asset to the school district because they weren't going to impact us negatively, they're only going to impact us positively. So, it's really complic, it's kind of somewhat complicated, but it's important to know is, when you see a special deal, that special deal is for that entity, for that business, but everybody else is paying more. So, it might sound good, but you got to know that you're paying more.
But you're referring to the pilot.
I'm paying, even like the town of Plasberg, where the mall, the mall had a reduced assessment from an over-assessment of $37 million, and now it's like $17 million.
Right.
So, they're paying $20 million less. Well, if $8 million was a 10%, 10 cent hit, that had been about a 22% hit on the, on the tax rate. That means you, me, you, 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 all paid more that year. Now, we might not have seen it as a big hit because there might have been other growth in the town, right? Other, other buildings went up, Buffalo Wild Wings, whatever it was--
Right.
--went up, and we went on the tax rolls, so it washes out.
We got, we got lucky there, but, but it could have impacted our entire budget.
Well, we could be down to 15 cents per thousand, too. Right? Our taxes could be going down, and more people would be moving in. And actually, that's the incentive. The town should work, the towns should work on incentivizing more people moving in to hear what's going on with the taxes, and then businesses will follow as well. We had a reverse. We want to give the big businesses, and then all the little businesses and the retirees can't afford to live here, can't afford to live in New York. Obviously, we've done, we've done a lot of research on that. We're kind of aggressive on that, but we believe in it wholeheartedly. We believe in fighting for grants and fighting for our programming, maintaining our programming. And we also, we've said it a lot of times, we believe in fighting for our taxpayers. That's why we did what we did with, with natural gas. That's what we did in EPC. That's what we did with the Capital Project. Capital Project was a win for our taxpayers and a win for our kids.
I have a stupid question.
It's not, it's not--
So, with the assessments going up, does the school benefit?
No, our budgets aren't budget, but what will, the perceived benefit will actually be--
Like--
--that our taxes could, could go down a little bit.
Oh, okay.
Because you're paying more, you're paying, you're not paying more per thousand, you're paying more thousands.
Right.
Right?
Right. So, your assessment may go up, but that means our base is bigger. So, that means your school tax might go down.
Oh, cool.
So, yeah.
Hi. Thank you.
It's kind of the shell game, unfortunately.
I'd like to thank the board and the administration for putting up good budgets and efforts on our own over these years. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any last opportunity for questions? Any other questions?
I do, I do have a comment, and seconding today. I got here during, I got on the board, gosh, you know, 10 years ago now, right? When there was a lot of discussion about budget issues, and someone on the board said, "If you don't like it," because I asked a question right where you guys were sitting, you remember that? And they asked, and they said, "Well, if you don't like it, why don't you join the board?" And then my wife pushed me in, and there I, here I am. So, but since then, we have taken, and I have to commend the business office and superintendent, a much more business-like approach to tackling this problem. Because the problem isn't just about money, it's about the value of the money we're spending. Is, is the value going to the kids correctly? You have more money and spend it poorly. So, so it's not just about that. And unfortunately, after the first or second year I got on here, that budget problem really weirded its ugly head, and it was heartbreaking to see us lay off a lot of great teachers that my kids had. It was, it was terrible. But since then--
The program really suffered then, too.
Well, right, right, exactly. And that, and that was part of it. So, since then, we, we try to stabilize it. I don't know if you got, got here after. We had a little chart that showed the taxes of the last 15 years, and for a while there, it was all over the--
Yeah.
And it was like, you know, oh, great, this year. But there was no long-term planning. So, we've changed the focus to be more long-term planning, to absorb it, to, when the capital project, you know, bans and the bonds disappear, that we have something else coming in so it's stable, and we get a value, the benefit from the state. So, I think the staff has worked really hard at fighting some of these tax, tax changes. It used to never be the case. Stuff like that would come to our table, and then we would just accept it. Oh, okay. You know, those taxes, no. Now, we have our attorneys on it, and we spend some money on attorneys, but we go out there, and we fight those tax reductions, and we get some of that money back. So, that's, that's money worth, worth well spent. And to your point, my education as an institution, it's a little different animal than the rest of the country where we all pay for our insurance in bigger chunks. So, that, that is different. I will say, though, that, that credit to this district compared to anyone else in the county, and as far as down at Tacon de Roga, this institution is the first one to make the first steps towards participating more with, with health insurance. So, you know, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough animal, but you squeeze the bubble here, and it comes out somewhere else. And certainly, compared to the rest of the districts around us, we're in much better shape.
Don't cheat, I said. So--
Quit lying.
Thank you, Mr. Maron. Any last questions? That's our budget presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Now, we're going to the bond resolution, CVS. There's correct me if I'm wrong. This is a long one. I'll read it first. The bond resolution of Beaverton Town Central School District adopted May 14, 2019, authorizing the issuance on sale of serial bonds or notes in anticipation of such bonds in the aggregate principal amount of $4,093,017.
I move to move the motion.
Well, thank you, because it's two pages long.
One second.
And it's, and it's on the website. Everyone wants more detail. So, Mike, Holly, Stance, any discussion on this? Questions?
So, that's for the Bozzi's Capital Project.
Right. That's in case we need to ban or bond any of that. This is the resolution.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Douglas Bebe, Kathy Buckley, Jeremy Connor--
Yes.
Michael Haggardorn--
Yes.
Holden Lehman--
Yes.
Ed Maron--
Yes.
Crystal Palmer--
Yes.
Mark San--
Yes.
Colleen Stone--
Yes.
All right. Resolution passes. Okay. Be resolved that the Board of Education approves the amended employment agreement dated May 14, 2019 between Beaverton Central School District and Daniel W. Mannix. Be further resolved that the President of the Board of Education be authorized to execute said amendment employment agreement on behalf of the board.
I'll, I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Douglas Bebe, Kathy Buckley, Jeremy Connor--
Yes.
Michael Haggardorn--
Yes.
Holden Lehman--
Yes.
Ed Maron--
Yes.
Crystal Palmer--
Yes.
Mark San--
Yes.
Colleen Stone--
Yes.
Resolution passes. Now, to financial. Result that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following financial resolutions on this consent agenda, financial reports, transfers, and surplus equipment and materials be and hereby adopted. Motion?
A motion.
Second.
Discussion, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Douglas Bebe, Kathy Buckley, Jeremy Connor--
Yes.
Michael Haggardorn--
Yes.
Holden Lehman--
Yes.
Ed Maron--
Yes.
Crystal Palmer--
Yes.
Mark San--
Yes.
Colleen Stone--
Yes.
Motion passes. All the way through. All right. We have another public comments session. Does anybody else want to join the mic? All right. Okay. And we are going to go into an executive session, but there will be no decisions or--
No action.
--motion, no action afterwards, okay? So, I need a motion to go into executive session.
A motion.
I'll second.
Second. Okay. And discussions, questions?
Do we need to save the purpose?
Yes.
Because that would be collective negotiations in the three weeks--
It's the same one that we have here. So, let me repeat the one that we originally talked about because it's a continuation of the one we had here. All right. Result that the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person, a person's proposed litigation and collective negotiations with the Beaverton Support Staff. All right. We had a first and a second. Hall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And we need to do a clerk protest.
Okay. I guess I'll volunteer, if you're okay with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
All right. Take your seat. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.